I'd like to go to order the Regional City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 8th, 2023. We will first have identification by Elder Milton McLean Jr., pastor of the United Church of Mount Sinai, Holy Church of God, 600, Michael Walker Road, Reevesville.
Good evening. Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for another day of life, for health and for strength, and we thank you for this opportunity for us to come together as city and constituency. We ask, oh God, that you will give us your wisdom, your insight, and your counsel, that we may be able to leave this great city we call Reevesville. You get the glory, but give us the victory in all things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If we're all standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda tonight, we have recognition and presentation. Recognition by the Reevesville Kiwanis Club to the city of Reevesville. We have tonight with us our mothered Lieutenant Governor of Division 8 of Carolina's District of Kiwanis International and Ms. Susan Tucker, President of the Reevesville Kiwanis Club. Are there any other members of the Kiwanis Club that would like to come over?
They're here. Thank you. Mayor Gorham and city council members, the Kiwanis Club of Reevesville would like to say thank you to the city of Reevesville for their support, cooperation, encouragement, and especially their investment in the Skies the Limit Inclusive Park. It was just an idea to have an inclusive swing that the Kiwanis Club wanted to place in one of the city's parks and celebrate the Reevesville Club's 100th anniversary. And the way that idea soon turned into an entire inclusive playground is indeed remarkable. The first meeting with Mr. Haywood Cloud asked him to select a spot that, excuse me, the first meetings with Mr. Cloud were met with tremendous acceptance and a promise to find an appropriate existing playground where we could place the swing. When the Rotary Club requested and wanted to add some more inclusive equipment, the location was going to need to change, and our requested meeting with Rotary and Kiwanis was arranged with the city. We met with Assistant City Manager Chris Phillips, Mr. Cloud, and others from the Recreation Department, and they let us know about the city's thoughts about an entire playground that would incorporate all of our ideas together. They felt the Reevesville Area Foundation would be interested in matching the Kiwanis and Rotary donations, and thankfully, they were. Of course, we agreed and watched the dream come true for all of the children right here in Reevesville. The support from so many in City Hall, including Angela Stadler and Judy Yarborough and Summer Woodard, and the, let's see, get my place here, the Public Works Department, Quentin Robertson, and so many others, and virtually anyone associated with the city, just made sure that we were helped and anything that we needed was accepted and encouraged beyond anything we could have imagined. The absolute best reward or thank you is by going by the park and seeing children and adults of all abilities enjoying the park and equipment. So thank you for investing so much in our community and making the park a very visible example of Team Reevesville. And then it's signed by several of our club members. We give them that, and here's the plaque.
Thank you guys very much, Charles. Your help is essential. It's a wonderful addition to our city.
Thank you.
Why don't we have all the councils either come up with the, 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 how about the other Kiwanis members come up? Definitely. Angela, would you like us to calm down?
Well, since they are coming here, why don't we just have y'all in the background?
Come on, here.
Thank you, Charles. Okay, all right. One, all right, where's the, where's the certificate?
Tell me the whole.
Okay, thank you. All right, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. But I'm missing Teresa Tittle. Okay. One, two, three. Thank you.
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 Thank you so much.
Yes, you got it.
About you guys, this thing wouldn't have been possible. The only day I've ever seen in Vegas, raining and thundering and lightning, always somebody out there eating honey going down the slot. Thank you all so much. Next, we have a presentation of the Reevesville Sesquicentennial Magazine. Chris Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Clerk's passing out a copy to each of you. These are the first ones that have come out of her hands, so you're getting them fresh from the source.
She's had them under the locking key.
So part of our 2023 Sesquicentennial Celebration, our 150th birthday, we wanted to have a nice publication that people could have and look at and keep. And this, we feel like we accomplished that with this magazine. 132 pages is what we ended up with, and it's a lot of, lot of information in there. The anniversary is actually of the charter for the city of Reevesville, so a lot of this magazine is the history of the city as we know it. And I'll promise you, and Angela will promise you, there are mistakes in here, we know. We did the best we could, but nobody in 1873 said, "Let's write down everything for a magazine 150 years from now." So we did the best we could. We tried to pick up some of our elected officials over the 150 years, some of our, the growth of our city and our departments that we have now, some of the history, some of the financial history. It's a lot, a lot of good stuff, and we had some great sponsors that are also represented in the magazine, some, some really good Reevesville businesses. But we wanted to present it, and of course, the committee is made up of myself, Judy Yarborough, the city marketing director, Leanne Basinger, our HR director, our retired community development manager, Donna Settler, and city clerk. And I really want to thank Angela. She was really the driving force, the real work behind this, and this is something that we should all be proud of because it is a really nice publication, and I think a lot of folks will want, want to have them keep. So they will be out at our events from this point going forward. So the next event we have is actually at the Governor Reed House.
Team Center.
Team Center.
This is Thursday.
This Thursday.
47.
Like, two days from now, Thursday?
Right.
Okay, this Thursday. So this Thursday will be the first time we have these out, but we're going to have them out for folks that come out to our events, they can get these, and, you know, I hope that they'll enjoy going through them. If you find a mistake, let us know. We, we're not saying, you know, just because we tell you, we know there's some in there, we, something, this much information is bound to be something that's all a little bit one way or another. If you think it is, let us know, we'd be glad to hear any feedback. Yes, sir.
Will copies be available here at City Hall?
Yes, sir, we'll have some at City Hall if folks want to come by to get one. Absolutely.
Just from scanning, scanning, fantastic, I mean fantastic.
It was, it was, I'll admit, it was a little bit of fun trying to put all of it together. There was a lot of work to.
A lot of hard work, yeah, too.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Phelps, do you know approximately how many man-hours we're putting in? Did anybody keep up with that?
No, it was from citywide, a lot of people helped us, a lot of information. There was a little piece of project here on the end, it's been heavy in labor, too, to get it out the door, but I don't think we could really count all the contributions. But, you know, the, if it was the only thing we had to work on, it would have been even more fun, but.
That's what I was going to piggyback on, because you guys wrote a book, and in addition to the history and everything that I had gone through, because Ms. Stadler did have it under locking key, and we were not allowed to look at it, there's so much history in here, and you did this in addition to your regular job, which is tremendous. So kudos to you. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. And we are still celebrating this year, we're going to be right up until December 22nd. The actual official day that we were chartered will be celebrated, so the Team Center's next, and then we'll be at Governor Reed House and a concert. The concert series will be 70s Band this month. We'll be at all those events, and we'd love for people to come out.
Thank you, Chris, it's not my first meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And your team.
Next item on the agenda is the consumer agenda. We have four items. Anyone like to have one pulled? Now, I'll take the motion to approve the consumer agenda.
Seven minutes. That's it.
Any discussion? City done, heard done, those in favor, raise your hand. So move next to our public hearings. First public hearing, consideration of update to project area for the city's CBBG-1 Sewer Rehabilitation Project, including an amendment resolution, enclosure 1, being attended by Governor Travis L and Josh Beck, Public Works Club.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. You guys may recall, about this time last year, we presented to you guys a bid from KRT Utilities. So that bid came in, unlike most bids these days, substantially lower than expected. So between the bid price of that and the total grant, which we got in 2020, which was a few hundred dollars shy of $2 million after the completion of the rehab of 7,800 linear feet, and of course, engineering and grant fees associated with that project, we have a little over $800,000 left. And you guys can ask Chris, I'm not very good about giving money back. So, so what we would like to do, of course, there's a little exhibit, and I'm sure Mr. Fleming will, will speak to it shortly, but it shows the project area at that time. And my print's not the best, but hopefully, y'all's is better. So the red areas is what was previously rehabbed at the time, and then the lighter pink is what we're looking to do in this next step, if you will. And so that's triggering another public hearing, which is why we're here today. So I'll ask Mr. Fleming to come on up and go over some of the specifics of that, and we'll happily answer any questions you have, and then open it up.
Thanks, Josh. Mayor and Council, great to see you this evening, as always, I appreciate your time. As Mr. Beck indicated, we've got a little bit of money left in this grant, so in order to access it and allow the city to make full use of it, we do have a couple of housekeeping items to take care of where the funding agency is concerned. And so that's the main purpose of this evening, it's just a procedural item, conduct a public hearing to amend the original project scope to increase the project area and ultimately allow you to make use of these funds. So I'll apologize for the dry nature of this. It's a script of sorts, it's in keeping with all the Community Development Block Grant for Infrastructure requirements, so if you indulge me, I will read this into the minutes for this evening, and then I'm happy to answer any questions you may have afterwards. So the purpose of this public hearing is to clarify the project area for the project and allow residents an opportunity to express their views for the CBBGI Grant Number 19-I-3112 Sewer Rehabilitation Project. In April 2020, the city was awarded a total of $1,999,298 in the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development CBBGI funds, which totals 100% of the project costs, from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, Division of Water Infrastructure. As part of the funding application process, a public hearing was conducted in September of 2019 describing the CBBG program. Due to favorable construction bid prices, additional line work included within the original project area boundary can now be fixed. So the original approved project scope included the following major activities: rehabilitate and/or replace approximately 7,800 linear feet of deteriorated and aged gravity sewer outfall lines in the areas of Hart Street, Washington Avenue, Circle Drive, Terry Street, and Ray Street. An amendment number one to project scope added the Reevesville Intermediate School Outfall Line and the Western Connector to the project description. These segments were included in the application but not listed in the previous public hearing. Due to favorable construction bid prices received, the project can address additional sewer lines that were proposed in the original project boundary area. The amendment number two, project scope, scope will retain the original scope and conduct CCTV and subsequent rehab and replacement of up to an additional 2,400 linear feet of collector and outfall sewer line totaling approximately 10,200 linear feet for the project. Segments include portions of Davis at the intersection with Washington in a westward direction towards the Western Connector and Outfall, and cross-country easements off Terry Street crossing Franklin Street, and additional portions of the Reevesville Intermediate School Outfall Line southward towards Fulton Street as well as northwestward crossing Freeway Drive. These activities meet the same need and provide the same benefit as the original project scope. The additional line work was previously analyzed in preliminary engineering and environmental reports. The original determination of no adverse impact to the environment is retained. The project will be like-for-like replacement of lines with no increase in capacity. This project will improve local public and environmental health by eliminating inflow and infiltration and reducing the possibility of sanitary sewer overflows that flow into local tributaries and surface waters. Project activities will take place primarily in low and moderate income, or LMI, residential areas with the worst sewer line conditions. This project area has a population that is at least 51% LMI, and therefore, 100% of the CBBGI funds will be used to benefit LMI persons. The total project budget remains unchanged at $1,999,298. The city of Reevesville does not discriminate based on race, color, religion, sex, national origin, handicap, age, familial status, and the admission, access to, treatment, or employment in the CBBG program and activities. Efforts will be made to minimize displacement during project implementation and applicable utility easements, and displacement assistance as necessary will be available. Persons with disabilities, limited English proficiency, or who otherwise require special accommodations should contact the city at area code 336-349-1040, TDD 800-735-2962, relay service at 711. Citizen comments should be postmarked no later than 11 August 2023, and a written response will be made within 10 business days. The project amendment package will be submitted to Division of Water Infrastructure within approximately two weeks after all required CBBG forms are executed. Public grant documents are available at City Hall upon request between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. All City Hall visitors are to comply with federal, state, and local coronavirus guidelines. For additional information or to submit written comments, please contact Angela Stadler, City Clerk, at 230 West Morehead Street, Reevesville, North Carolina, 27320, phone number 336-349-1040, again, TDD 800-735-2962, relay service 711. This information is available in Spanish or any other language upon request. Please contact Angela Stadler, City Clerk, at 336-349-1040, or at 230 West Morehead Street, Reevesville, North Carolina, 27320 for accommodations to this request. That concludes my public hearing script. Thank you.
Questions?
Sir.
It's about two miles, it's about two miles, and we're going to be rehabbing.
All told, the, the original project area was about 7,800 linear feet. The additional area takes it to just north of 10,000 linear feet.
About a billion dollar amount.
Thereabouts. It's a bargain, right?
I have a question.
Ma'am.
How would you determine, you know, see eight-inch lines, 10-inch lines, 12-inch lines? How would you determine that?
So both through a combination of historical city records, and then once this project area that fits the low to moderate income requirements of the funding is determined, preliminary engineering that involves closed-circuit television inspection of those lines is conducted, one to verify line size, line material condition, et cetera. Yes, ma'am?
I think we'll call this our miracle mileage and stuff, out of our funds.
Ma'am, we didn't have to work a little bit for, it's been several weekends.
Being two, two billion dollar amount.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Public hearing opens at 6:22. Is there anyone who'd like to speak forward? Really? I'm on the cover there. Name Vincent Bolden, 416 Davis Street here in Reeves. I'm here to ask a question about the pipeline that you're doing down on Washington and Davis Street. How much of Davis Street will you be doing? I thought maybe it would be a map here tonight, that's why I'm here. But if you're doing anything on Davis Street, I noticed that today they're working on Marlberry and Harden Street, removing pipe. So on Davis Street, coming off of Marlberry and Harden, running down Davis Street to Washington Avenue, there's a terrible flow of water when it rains hard. I've had, I put railroad ties on the banks trying to hold the wash away from heavy rainfalls, and I've had railroad ties that come all the way down to Washington Avenue. And I was just wondering how far would that new pipeline go on Davis Street? Or would it come to Davis and Harden Street?
So I can't speak to the impact of the project with respect to drainage or storm drainage. This is particularly sanitary sewer infrastructure, so I don't know that it would have any impact on localized drainage conditions. Certainly something city staff can look into. There's no work actively ongoing right now, the initial project has completed and closed out. What we're speaking about this evening is just the future work, and a portion of the gravity sewer lines on Davis will be addressed if they have not argued.
Okay. I just noticed that every time we have a hard rain, it bags up at Washington and Davis Street, they have to come down there in city trucks and kind of dig out for the, cause all the yards down there, they flood back up towards, up farther up on Davis Street from Washington Avenue.
Davis from Washington, all right, very good, noted.
So I just wanted to get it out there, and if there's anything that, you got any extra money, that come up Davis Street.
I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Beck and see what we can do.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And sir, sir, before you leave here, so hop me a lockout, and the board is going to give me another map. So you take that one. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. You're welcome.
This was great, I'd like to know if Mr. Bolden retired fire captain.
Retired fire captain.
Yes, first black fireman. To the fire chief.
He's a good man.
Got some history, isn't he?
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak forward? Same none as anyone who'd like to speak against? Same none, we'll close the public hearing at 6:26. Any discussion? Do we have a motion? So move. Motion and a second, no discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Next, we have consideration of a special use permit application to place a manufacturing home at 636 Wicken Street, Rockland County Tax Parcel 154184, located in the Central Six, R6 zoning district, S2023-1, enclosure 2, Jason Hart. And before we look at that, we have a special use permit statement that we have to read. This is a quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing per North Carolina General Statute 160D-406 and 705 that sets forth the standards for granting a special use permit as follows: "The Board's discretion is limited. The Board must base its opinion upon competent, relevant, and substantial evidence and the record. A quasi-judicial decision is not, is not a popularity contest. It's a decision constrained by the standards and the ordinance and based on the facts presented. If you will be speaking as a witness, please focus on the facts and standards, not personal preference or opinion. Participation is limited. This meeting is open to the public, everyone is welcome to watch. Parties with standing have rights, just fully. Parties may present non-repetitive evidence, call witnesses, and make legal arguments. Parties are limited to the active, or the government and individuals who can show they will suffer special damages. Other individuals may serve as witnesses when called by the Board. General witnesses' testimony is limited to facts, not opinions, for certain topics. The Board needs to hear opinions or testimony from expert witnesses. These topics include projections about impact and property value and projections about impact of increased traffic. Individuals providing expert opinions must be qualified as experts and provide the factual evidence upon which they base their expert opinion. Witnesses must swear or affirm their testimony. At this time, we would administer the oath for all individuals who intend to provide witness testimony."
Is there anyone else expecting to speak on this particular issue? African or anyone? The applicant or anyone?
Nella Logan has applied for a special use permit for 636 Lincoln Street. The applicant is requesting to place a manufactured home at the location. The property is zoned residential six, R6, and manufactured homes on single lots are allowed with a special use permit. The standards for manufactured homes are identified in the zoning ordinance. The standards and the ordinance for manufactured homes on single lots are as follows. Manufactured homes on single lots must be built to HUD standards. That's the National Mobile Home Construction and Safety Standards Act. Each unit must have been constructed within five years of the date of the issuance of the zoning compliance permit. Each unit must further comply with the following criteria. The manufactured home has a length not exceeding four times its width. The pitch of the manufactured home's roof has a minimum vertical rise of two and two tenths feet for each 12 feet of horizontal run. And the roof is finished with shingles. The exterior siding consists predominantly of vinyl or aluminum, horizontal lap siding, wood or hardboard, and a continuous masonry curtain or wall that's unpierced, except for ventilation and access is installed under the manufactured home. And the tongue and axle are removed along with the towing apparatus and the transportation lights. A porch of at least 16 square feet in size and at least four feet, five to four feet in dimensions with stairs must be attached to the front entrance. And the, and the workmanship must be conducted in a manner that meets the North Carolina Building Code. The applicant is required to meet this criterion in addition to any conditions placed on the special use permit. The council must come to certain findings regarding the impact of development on the area. These findings are found in the zoning ordinance. It's the applicant's responsibility to provide clear, substantial, and credible evidence that will allow the council to take the appropriate action. The council may also recommend conditions be placed on the application to ensure that the proposed project meets the intent of the zoning ordinance and the following of the specific findings of fact from the zoning ordinance the council must come to. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property values or that the use is a public necessity. The location and the character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the land development plan adopted for the city of Readsville. The planning staff recommend the following conditions be placed on the special use permit. The use shall comply with the special use standards for manufactured homes per the zoning ordinance. That was the long list of things I just read. And the unit shall comply with the North Carolina Building Code. And the planning board unanimously recommended the special use permit be approved. That's all I have, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any other questions?
My understanding is that this home will be a residential home that will not be used as a business.
It'll be a manufactured home, that's correct.
But I mean, it will be a residential home, that's what I see.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jesse?
This home is replacing a burned out home, independent property, just like a residential house. Under what is property materials?
Under, oh, using the foundation. I'm not sure what they intend as far as design goes. Yeah, the applicant can, yeah, answer that question. But it sounds like it.
So, under, it was posted in that area, what was proposed to go with that they did? It was proposed, was it, was it quietly posted that there would be a manufactured home there?
Yes, sir. We always post a sign on the property.
We had any neighborhood objections, though.
I haven't received any concerns. No problem.
Public hearing will open at 6:35.
Name and address.
Oh, Nella Logan, 636 Lincoln Street. And the house burnt up in, on April the 20th of this year. And I've been staying in the hotel ever since. I'm ready to go home. I am, I'm ready to go home. But I couldn't save it. We all grew up in that house. Ten of us grew up in that house. But I couldn't save the house. I wanted to, but I couldn't.
Any other questions?
Do you have a prospective date of when you're going to get to go?
No, ma'am. Not yet. I think whenever, if I can be able to put a home there, I just know from there.
So, as soon as you get there, okay, we can.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak for? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Same number, we're closing the public hearing at 636.
Yeah, I have a minute.
Yes, sir.
It would be a pleasure to make the motion with a special use permit document number
And I second that emotion. You've got to go through the, um, four.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Anyway, my thing, my fault. My fault. I still won't make that motion.
We've got one ahead of us. We have to go through the filing, the facts. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located or proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. Those in favor, raise your hand. Number two, the use, use meets all required conditions and specifications. All in favor, raise your hand. Number three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or that the use is a public necessity. Those in favor, raise your hand. And number four, the location and the character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area which it is to be located and in general conformity with the land development plan for Readsville and the surroundings. Those in favor, raise your hand. Nella, I think we've got a little caught up, a little heartfelt for you. So, we rest down a little bit.
Do I need to go home?
Not yet. And there were two conditions also. The use shall comply with the special use criteria for manufactured mobile homes per the regional zoning ordinance. And the unit shall comply with the North Carolina Building Code. Now, we need a vote.
To me, if correct, my heart got hit in my brain. That's my motion to speak, too.
And I second that because my heart certainly goes out to, to no place like home. Any discussion? Those in favor? Nella, you can go home.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one request from Ms. Logan. Ms. Logan, when you get your home set up and established, if you will give our clerk a call and let us know, we can ride by and look at your brand new home.
Okay, thank you, I will. Thank you.
He also cooked for us, too.
Next on the agenda, consideration of a special use permit application to operate a homeless shelter at 305 Branch Street, Rockingham County Tax Parcel, number 182871, located in the office of Institutional O&amp;I Zoning District, S2023-2 enclosure three, Jason Hart. And we will be following the same quasi judicial hearing, whereas people will have these warnings. All those who are going to speak for or against, please.
Please come forward and speak on this particular issue. Do you swear and affirm that what you're about to say is the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you again, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Excuse me. Melissa Galloway has applied for a special use permit for 305 South Branch Street. The applicant is requesting to operate a homeless shelter at the location. There are standards for homeless shelters identified in the zoning ordinance. The property is zoned office and institutional, O&amp;I, and homeless shelters are allowed with a special use permit. The standards in the homeless, for homeless shelters in the ordinance are as follows. Excuse me, I apologize for that. A needs assessment is required, a valid needs assessment indicating the feasibility of the proposed development shall be presented along with the special use permit request. Information provided in the needs assessment shall be supported by reference and source to document validity. The assessment shall outline the following. The area the proposed shelter shall serve, it's a map, it's a site plan, just showing the surrounding area. A determination of the homeless population in the stated area in the past, present, and future. A determination of overall population in the stated area. A statement of need. The applicant must present data on property uses and physical character of the surrounding neighborhood, along with demonstrating how the proposed development will be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. They must also indicate the location of other group home facilities per the definition of group homes in the ordinance in the surrounding area. The off-street parking requirements are one parking space required for every four beds the shelter provides. There is a required landscaping buffer where a homeless shelter abuts a residential lot in a residential district. Or land occupied by any residential use permitted by the zoning ordinance, there shall be provided and maintained along the property line a continuous visual buffer. The buffer shall be compact, a compact evergreen hedge or other type of evergreen foliage screening, or shall be a combined fence with, using shrubbery as a screen. The minimum building area of the building shall have a minimum floor space of 50 square feet per person. There is a radius requirement, the zoning lot on which the homeless shelter proposed, is proposed, shall not be located within one-fourth mile radius of a zoning lot containing another such residential facility. Operations conditions, occupants must be contained within the building. Operation must be operated by, operation must be conducted by a government agency or tax exempt organization under the Internal Revenue Service Regulations and 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code. The operator must provide continuous onsite supervision during hours of operation. The applicant is required to meet this criterion in addition to any conditions that are placed on the special use permit. As you're aware, the council must come to certain findings regarding the impact of the development on the surrounding area. These findings are found in the zoning ordinance. It's the applicant's burden to provide evidence and materials that will allow the council to take action. The Board must also recommend conditions, may also recommend conditions on the application to ensure that the proposed project meets the intent of the zoning ordinance. The following findings of fact are the ones that the Board must come to. These are the same ones that I read in the previous case. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located or proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will not substantially injure the value of surrounding properties. The location and the character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the surrounding area and the land development plan for the city of Readsville. The planning staff recommend the following conditions be placed on the special use permit. The use shall comply with the special use criteria for homeless shelters per the reasonable zoning ordinance. And the building shall comply with the North Carolina Building Code. The planning board unanimously recommended that the special use permit be approved. And again, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
Application, can we take a quick look at the application?
I don't have it in front of me, but.
The application I have does not have a date on it. Not dated.
For submittal?
Yes.
Okay. We can find, I think we had to correct that, must have gotten the other one in there. But I can guarantee that it was, it was submitted in the timeline that it needed to be to get before planning board.
Listen, not shot, it's not dated. You should have left blind. Can we take a look at it?
Sure, yeah.
Submitted dated, yes. I apologize for that. I'm sure we have a dated copy in the file in our office.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I see that the building shall have a minimum floor space of 50 square feet per person. What is the floor space of the building?
It should be in the plan that was provided in the, they provided a site plan which shows the square footage of the building.
Have you had any action from the neighborhood?
We've gotten a few calls about it. People are very interested about it. Some people have liked it, some people have not liked it. That's the reception that I've gotten on it. However, the decision that the council makes, again, has to be based on the evidence that's been presented, not based on the popularity of it. Basically, do you think this evidence that they presented in the application in the packet is sufficient to meet the standards? No problem.
Any other questions, Jesse?
Is there a lot of work to be done on the general?
My impression from what I've been told is that the building is in pretty bad shape, so likely that there will be a bit of work to do to get it into habitable shape.
You know how long the building has been, since it's been occupied? It's been many years.
It's been a while. The last thing that I was told it was, was a nursing home at one point. Before that, it was the school, the Branch Street Elementary, I believe it was called. It's been a while.
It was my oldest.
Okay, there you are.
I don't see anywhere square footage that I can read. Some of the pages are a little bit blurry, but I just wondered what was the possibility of having a bed and there would be there?
I believe that is on the site plan. I remember reviewing that when they submitted that, the number of beds is on the site plan submitted.
It's the drawing that have the rubber, use our values for force.
There's a little I can't read.
It's 11,260 square feet for 29 beds, according to the plan.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
The public hearing will open at 6:50.
Melissa Galloway, 1089 U.S. Business 29, here in Reevesville.
Tell us a little bit about your program.
About our program. Well, we operate the homeless shelter in Eden, we have 30 beds in that facility. Every day, the homeless are able to come in at 5:00, they leave out at 8:30 in the morning or 9:00 o'clock. We have two vans that we transport them to wherever in the county that they need to go. Daymark, Social Service, to look for IDs, social security cards, birth certificates. We help them get those identification or IDs. Every day, we have a church or organization coming in with a hot meal and leaving something for breakfast. We provide or we have donations as far as people supplying their clothing, everything that they need, shoes. Whatever they need, we have volunteers and churches and organizations that provide those things. Once they have achieved their jobs or housing, we do have people that donate furniture, everything they need for their housing. They donate as far as jobs, we take them to the temp services, not only the temp services, but to get on the computer to look for housing and jobs, trying to minister to the whole man. And that's basically it, we have two transitional housing at this time. One is at 307 Branch Street and the other one is at Grooms Road, which they must have a job and they must be able to pay rent in order to stay in those places. And most of the time, it's those families with children. We do house the men, women, and children at the shelter, but we really, we're trying to bring a separation between those that are mentally ill or the children so that they don't have to be with those that have the problems. And that's basically it as far as I set up. I know there was some concerns about the people walking in the neighborhood or, or walking on people's property. We really, for this building here, we really want to offer a whole lot more than what we are able to do in Eden because it's so small. We want to provide workshops for them, we want them to start their own businesses, those that want to start their business. And even some of them can help clean up in that neighborhood if needed. So we wanted to offer all kinds of workshops there for them, bring classes in, have classes, GED classes, whatever their need is, we wanted to do, computer classes, we wanted to be able to offer that also on the site. We mainly wanted to use the Reevesville site to separate those kids, to have the kids here in Reevesville, the mothers and, or the fathers with their children, the way we wanted to set it up here in Reevesville for the shelter.
How long can a client stay at this facility?
They are able to stay anywhere from a day to 90 days. And then we try to transition them out. Everybody has to be doing something productive, whether it's going to school or going to work or looking for work. Everybody has to be doing something productive.
How long do you operate in Eden? I know it's been a good while.
I have been doing it for over 30 years, but I took it over in 2010.
Ms. Galloway, I've had the privilege of visiting your facility in Eden many years ago. And at that time, it was separated, the men were on one side, women and children were on another side. Is that what you plan to do in this facility if the council so desires?
Correct.
Okay, and then would there be a special place because sometimes a female owner is not involved, this father or children? Said there'd be a special place for that family?
Yes, we want to be able to try to house the men, women, and children, and veterans. We do have sometime veterans that come through.
Thank you.
Is the staff a volunteer or do you have a paid staff?
We, the, most of our staff is volunteer, we do have some paid staff.
I'd like to commend you on the work that you're doing. And you still work closely with the help of the homeless and some of the organizations that we have to supply your needs?
Many of those organizations call me with their needs as far as housing their people.
Has the Reevesville area increased in homelessness since the pandemic?
Yes, it has.
The homeless population in Reevesville is kind of a solid population, it's open that you might see in other cities. They kind of blend in with the population. I've had an opportunity to work with Melissa Galloway at her facility in Eden. Our church provides food, supper, and we also provide song through our mail course at our church. I know they enjoy the food, food, I don't know so much about them that they enjoy the supper. But, but we try to do the best that we can. Her organization is very well organized and put together.
It may break my heart to see anybody hungry, especially testing my heart when there's kids involved or students involved. I do know that we have high school students here that are hungry.
Thank you.
I appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Back in the 90s, when I was assistant principal at Reevesville High School, we had several homeless high school students and I would love anything, they'd take showers. Let them hang around as long as they needed to, actually, before we shut them down. So we do, we, we have a problem, but it's not as wide open that you can see like you see in other cities. Our homeless just mix in.
Any other questions, Melissa Galloway?
So we need to get this approved so she can get started.
I believe you want to speak for him.
I just agree with everything she says, she's definitely got a heart. Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Gail Hallman, I live in Eden, I met Ms. Melissa about three years ago. I've always been a resident in Eden, but I had the privilege to be able to go to California. While I was out there, I helped minister on Skid Row. So I definitely believe in the cause and it's definitely a hand up helping people. You know, she's, she's awesome, got a passion for it and it definitely, it's a need and I support it tremendously. Hallman, H-A-L-L-M-A-N. Thank you.
I believe these were all the two sworn in, is anybody else having any other questions? If not, we'll go through the findings of fact. Did you ask anybody who's opposed?
We all, they all had to be sworn in.
Okay.
Just, just for GP, is there anybody who's against? Like come forward and be sworn in, speak.
You may accept my disc.
This is another one of those heartfelt ones.
I could be sworn in to comment, I wouldn't be speaking against, I'd be speaking for, but I might bring clarity to the facility, the construction.
All right, would you come forward?
Do you swear affirm that what you're about to say is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please identify yourself.
Bill Sinclair, 1560 County Home Road in Reevesville, Wentworth. And I'm slated to be the contractor for the project. It is currently a about 12,000 square foot building and it's blighted. I mean, it is in really rough shape, we actually did just replace the roof just to try to stop the bleeding. But this will be a significant overhaul, we will, inside and out, will be a brand new building when we're done. And if there's any specific questions, and I realize the plan in your package is probably really small, but of course, we have full-size drawings that you could, you know, we'd be happy to present a copy that you could look at that would probably tell a better story.
So even though it is an old building, it's, it's.
It, it's not, it's not pretty, so it wouldn't be my first date, but she's a nice girl. It's, it's, it's got decent bones and, and with a little TLC and some significant blood, sweat, and tears. Yeah, it'll be a new facility. And it's, you know, if anything, it's, just physically, it'll be an improvement to the neighborhood. And, and obviously, as opposed to a blighted building that actually, you know, might attract some vagrancy and whatnot and certainly some graffiti and what have you, but if, once it's cleaned up, it does nothing but help stabilize property values for the surrounding neighborhood. So I would think that neighbors would benefit from this as well. Any questions?
No, but I'd just like to say I thank you for taking on this project.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I've, I've been, actually was introduced to Ms. Melissa through Rotary. I was Reevesville Rotary's president at the time, at one time that she came through and presented and we certainly took some, some interest in her and, and her, her mission and have supported her. And, and then probably within about a year of that first introduction, my daughter decided for one of her birthdays while she was still in high school, that she wanted to go serve breakfast at the shelter and we did that. And we went in and served breakfast, which was, you know, which was nice and of course, you know, they need to eat and whatnot. But what was really great was then all of, it was about seven girls. After they, everyone ate, the girls went out into the, you know, into the, just the population and just sat there and just talked to them for like another hour and got to know them and hear their stories and whatnot. And it was just, you know, and they were just really great people, you know? Needed, needed a little hand and it was, it was nice to see that that hand was being given, so. All right, thank you.
We'll close the public hearing at 7:02. Now the final remarks. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located or proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. Those in favor, raise your hand. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or owning a property or if the use is a public necessity. The location and the character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area which it is to be located and in general conformative with the land development plans for Reevesville and its surrounding. Those in favor, raise your hand. That's all for you. And the conditions, the use shall comply with the special use criteria for homeless shelters per Reevesville zoning ordinance. And the facility shall comply with the North Carolina Building Code. Do we have a motion? That was about four or five motions. I believe you can do that by then when you want to. End of discussion. Same done, very done, those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Good job, man. All right, we're moving on to the next item on the agenda. Consideration of the text amendment request to be an article, 4, Section 1, zoning districts. In Section 2, description of districts. Article 5, Section 2, table of permitted uses of the city's zoning ordinance and to add, Section 5, special zoning district established as a new traditional neighborhood, T.N. Special zoning district T-2023-07, enclosure 4, Jason Hall. Committee of the President.
Thank you again. I'm only slightly hurt that they didn't stick around to hear my other three, but it's okay. The, the planning staff is petitioning to add at Article 5, Section 5, special zoning districts to the zoning ordinance along with establishing a new traditional neighborhood, TN, zoning district to the reasonable zoning ordinance. Special zoning districts are those which do not easily categorize as standard what we call general use districts. Like your, your residential, your, your residential 12, residential 20, your highway commercial, things that are kind of chocolate and vanilla, things that are just your basic zoning, you would say. Special zoning districts offer a high degree of flexibility and basically allow combinations of uses which you wouldn't see in a standard general use zoning district. For any special use district that's located under this section, there would be a requirement for a, an approved unified development plan. A UDP, and what that is, it's a, basically a compilation including a concept plan, basically a detailed site plan that includes all phases of the proposed development, district regulations. So the district itself does not have, like, prescribed setbacks. So the developer, when they would design these districts, they would basically design it themselves. And they would say, this is how we want to do it, but they would work with staff and the city's technical review committee, which is composed of planning, public works, building inspections and engineering, and the fire marshal, all those departments review site plans. So anything, any of these UDPs will be distributed to those committee members. And we would all work with the developer, get comments, go back and forth until we get to the conclusion. And that's all before it comes before council for approval. That's all fronts of whatever development comes out of that, i- is going to be, the plan's going to be here and we're going to have it, like with the conditional zoning, like we did a few months ago. It also requires a signage plan, so like I said, signage, there, there was no, for any special zoning district, there's no specific signage regulations, the developer would make those essentially, or they can default to those in the zoning ordinance. They're already there for another district or, if they, if it's a residential district, then automatically defaults to R6, to those regulations if they don't want to have their own. So it's, it's more flexibility, it's more, you know, they get to design it the way they want it. The process to rezone property into a special zoning district is the same as a conditional zoning with TRC review slash approval of the proposed concept plan upfront, planning staff recommendation, planning board recommendation, and then council approval or disapproval at the end. If there's any major change to the UDP, it must be approved by council. The, the planning director is authorized to approve minor changes, they may consult the TRC for any input that's required. So that's it for minor changes, like removing a couple of lots, things that would not constitute a major change, like a change of use or something like that. The proposed amendment, that was phase one, is just the umbrella, which is Section 5. The next one is creating a zoning, an actual zoning district under that section, which is the traditional neighborhood district. The intent of this district is to allow establishment of pre-1940 style compact neighborhoods with a distinct sense of place and character. They're limited in size and oriented towards pedestrian activity. And what that means is. in size and oriented towards pedestrian activity. And what that means is architecture prior to the car. The automobile changed everything, uh the way that we designed cities, the way that we planned for development. So prior to the automobile, it was pedestrian centric. Large uh streets with walkways, with sidewalks, with small setbacks, townhomes, houses were always built close to the road with a sense of what we call enclosure as you walk along the street. You can see this in a lot of neighborhoods around Reedsville. When you see houses, they're very close to the road with sidewalks and more walkable than your traditional, like your suburban neighborhood with big driveways and huge setbacks and, you know, no sidewalks, really, uh not not very walkable, not very compact. Uh and this also allows for a flexibility of housing types. So it would um single family homes would be allowed, townhomes, duplexes, multifamily, because traditional neighborhoods didn't just have, it wasn't what we call exclusionary zoning with like just single family homes. You're going to have townhomes, you're going to have apartments and various kinds of housing in these, in these uh districts. Uh there is a requirement for an approved traditional neighborhood plan. That's just basically renaming the U D P. It's the same thing. It it's just, there's more requirements for the traditional neighborhood plan, uh more principles they have to address in the the design. And I won't go through all those, but basically, it's just saying they're meeting the intent of the traditional neighborhood district. Uh the reasonable land development plan discusses at length about the pressing need for housing across the city, including expanding housing options. And these kind of districts with multiple types of housing is going to give you that flexibility. That's what developers are looking for. Uh a lot of developers, they they want to do townhomes and single family. They don't want to do just single family now. They want to maximize their density to get the most out of it, which is understandable. But it also helps because you end up with more walkable neighborhoods. And urban sprawl, which this is attempting to address, all this came out of a movement called New Urbanism out of the late eighties, which was trying to hearken back to pre nineteen forties development to try to increase walkability and decrease and decrease reliance on automobiles and more walkability, more sense of community, at least in the architectural style. So that that's the intent of this zoning district. Uh it provides flexibility in development regulations to assist with addressing the crucial need for housing. Uh the plan also stresses the desire to maintain a sense of community and a small town feel, and a traditional neighborhood district is the embodiment of that. That small town uh design with typically has like a community gathering place for people to like a town center, I I think would be uh something that you would include in that design. Uh the amendment li- the amendment aligns with goal number three of the reasonable land development plan to expand housing. Uh this amendment will aid in the expansion of the housing stock and while providing a variety of housing options that are attractive and affordable to all people, to people of all income levels. Uh based upon our analysis presented, the text amendment is consistent with the city's land development plan. It's reasonable and in the public interest in there as there is a considerable need to expand the housing stock and options throughout the city. The planning staff recommend adoption of the proposed text amendment, and the planning board unanimously recommended the text amendment be approved. I'll always glad to answer questions.
Two things I heard enhance that flexibility.
Yes, sir.
Exactly. The best two two things in that that uh that you need, Bill, you need, and for us also to um to to meet citizens in the future. To yes, enhance and flexible, that you work for.
Sure. And and that's what any district under this section would prescribe for. The the traditional neighborhood does have some stylistic guidelines that you have to follow, but it's not as confining as say, like not telling you what the setbacks are, telling you how big your signs have to be. It it just gives a little bit more flexibility, uh while still making sure that the intent of that district is realized. And uh we we kind of pushed this one a little bit. I I've been working on this for a while since we've been approached about it. But uh, you know, we're working on the ordinance rewrite. So we kind of pushed this one a little bit quicker, uh even though we'll we'll obviously be looking at other options with the ordinance rewrite that would go under a section like this. It may not look the exact same because it's going to be a brand new ordinance, but uh something in this vein of flexible zoning districts. So it's just kind of the the start, I would say.
Let's get down to the like special community where they do things, people other than house.
Sure. Oh, yes. I didn't touch on the commercial aspect, though. Thank you for reminding me of that. So this doesn't just include residential. You can do commercial development, like small box retail, uh restaurants, things of that nature, because traditional neighborhoods were uh mixed use in nature. You typically have like your, you know, your neighborhood bookstore, whatever kind of retail you had nearby, because, you know, people weren't driving, so you had to have some closer vibe. Again, how the automobile changed to how we build cities. So. Yeah, it's the last, what was that?
These neighborhoods where you wouldn't have it.
I have a lot of these neighborhoods, you have.
And another aspect of it is, it doesn't have to be a what we call a greenfield. It doesn't have to be taking an empty piece of property and just building on it. You could actually apply this to existing development. It has been done. Uh I don't know if y'all have been to South Side Greensboro. That's what we've always been talking about since we've been working on this. So they took existing housing that was built probably before they had zoning. I don't know exactly when Greensboro got zoning, but uh they took existing housing and made it conforming in their T N plan. So that took this like hundred year old housing that was probably not conforming with, you know, large lot zoning for single family homes, it made them conforming. And then they eventually got the commercial development after that. So.
To make sure that I understand this.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we kind of find an area and we designate this as the the traditional neighborhoods, and then developers come in? Or do we wait for developers to come in?
We would probably typically wait for developers to come in, uh because they would probably want to, if if it is new construction, obviously, they would want to buy it. Now, the city of Greensboro did theirs as a bond issue, and the city kind of did that differently, which that took a lot of capital, a lot of investment to make that happen. So typically, I would say your developer would do it. Not impossible, but you it would be a lot of planning on our end to make that district. So uh might need a bit bigger planning department, but that's another conversation. We're going to go that route.
So it just makes us a little bit more open and changes our attitude when a developer come in.
Sure. And there there's developers like we we have Nate here today, who's a developer uh that specialize in in these T N districts. And they know, you know, the how you build those, and they're familiar with city regulations on them and everything. So uh typically, it's only special developers that do that. But uh yeah, because you don't see that many of them right now, but hopefully, it's going to keep getting more popular with the T N districts.
Thank you.
No problem.
Still, the changes as far as builders, we still have to go through planning and see if things come to um for the council, but you still have more flexibility.
Yes.
And be able to enhance more than we can.
Sure. Uh the flexibility is in the design. So when you're designing the project, and they'll still have to meet with staff, they're still going to have to go through the technical review committee, and then they're going to have to apply to have the property rezoned and go before planning board and council. So it's it's the flexibility that's added is in the design of the project.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Public hearing will open at seven eighteen.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh Nate Bowman, two oh five South Church Street, Huntersville, North Carolina. Uh Jason did a great job, and I've actually gone to places and spoke for an hour and a half on this, so I'm not going to go that direction. But briefly, the movement was started by two architects at undergrad at Princeton and Yale, Andreas Dewaney and Elizabeth Platter-Zeberg. She became the dean of the School of Architecture in Miami, and their first neighborhood, which is, he's kind of a rock star. He's kind of like our uh, you know, um, I can't think, can't come up with my architect's name, but uh anyway, uh Seaside in Florida was the first one in the mid eighties. And he used to travel around the country, and people would argue and go after him because they wanted the same old mon- monoculture. They wanted the same size lot, the same size house. They wanted to drive everywhere. And so he had to convince them that this was pre World War II, non-autocentric, non-monocultural development was the way we should go, at least for some people. It's another tool in the toolbox. We don't think everybody needs to live in a neighborhood like this, but we think there should be an option. And uh I ended up sending my son to school at Miami. I hired Andreas to do my uh D P Z is the name of the firm, to do a project in uh Huntersville. I'll show you in just a minute. And uh in a minute, uh my son, who got his master's in town design there, uh I'm going to show you a couple, the property we have under contract on Reed School Road. He designed it as a typical suburban development and then as a T and D. So you can see the difference on this particular project. Um I'm just going to show you a few slides here and see if I can get it on here, Jason.
Oh, I turned it on.
There goes. Good. This is actually our neighborhood in Vermillion. Uh we started, I had one little parcel in here, about ten acres. Uh now it's grown so much, I I need to do a new uh rendering. It's uh over five hundred acres right in the center of Huntersville, right next to the train tracks. They were supposed to give us mass transit, and they haven't yet. But you can see here a little neighborhood center. We actually have a a restaurant here. I call it a bar, uh because I wanted to tell mothers against drunk driving, your kid, if you're and adults against drunk driving. You can walk down to the bar and you can walk home. Actually, my office is in the square, and we're actually doing a huge development here uh now, which will have a lot more commercial, will all be walkable, and three hundred apartments. But it ended, right now, it's expanded to, we've had seventy six parcels we bought, and it's uh over five hundred acres and about fifteen hundred units. And we have everything. I always tell people, I can stand in the one spot and show them a giant single family house, a duplex, a little apartment that's affordable, a a business, all within, I can just spin around. So you can always, can't always get that in these new projects. On Reed School Road, we're not going to get the commercial out there, but it could grow towards where you have the commercial. In other words, this started small and ended up being five hundred acres. And we're not done yet. We still have more. We're moving into town. And somebody on the planning staff, uh planning board, got this correct. It is great for infill projects. And you have so many blocks that have infrastructure in, they're underutilized, that have sewer, that have water. And if you put this in your ordinance as things move forward, hopefully, that's going to happen. But uh that's kind of what we did in Greensboro. Let's see. This is Greensboro, South Side. This is Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. Uh these are townhomes. This is a restaurant. The last time I was there, I'm not sure what it is. Uh after we did this, an apartment developer came in and put three hundred apartments in over here, and it's one of the most energetic neighborhoods right in the heart of downtown Greensboro that you can walk everywhere downtown. And then we rehabbed, we took some homes that you had to hold your breath when you went in. And we rehabbed about fifteen homes, and then we interspersed homes that you couldn't tell the difference which one was a hundred years old and which one was new. And it won three national awards for the city of Greensboro. They got to go up to the uh national uh building uh thing on the plane and get an award up in Washington. And this is kind of an overview that we did when we were visualizing how it would look. And it looks very much like that today. Okay, here's your suburban on Reed School Road. It's about eighty-five lots. It's it's, my son does good design, even if he's doing suburban design. So there's no cul-de-sacs. Typically, if you look across the street, you'll see the cul-de-sacs. Cul-de-sacs stop connectivity. It forces you out one direction. And I if somebody lives across the street, I want them, that's perfectly fine, but every house is the same, pretty much every yard, same size. And that's the way this is designed. And if we need to go that direction, if we have a huge neighborhood and say, oh, we don't want T and D, I mean, that's what you're going to get, because we're going to buy the property. So it's a choice. And then here's a T and D. The other one is about one point seven nine units. This is about two point seven nine units an acre. So it's not extremely dense, because you look at how we buffered all the neighborhoods around with the green space, and that will interact with the neighborhood for all those walkers. I go four and a half miles a day. I used to run. People know me, unfortunately, and boy, because they say that's a crazy guy out in the hundred degree heat. But I do the same route. It's obsessive compulsive disorder. But you you know, people could make it around here, uh up front, there's townhomes facing the street, all the garages are on alleys. So you see nice porches or nice architecture up front. And then we're actually going to preserve the older historic home here as a focal point. So as you're coming in, you'll see the older farmhouse here that sits up on the ridge. And we have a nice little open space here that that people can interact in. And this is kind of like our neighborhood green that we focus. So you see the houses will have front porches. You're not going to see garages in that area. Now, when you get to larger homes, we'll add some garages, but they'll be setback from the front porch. They won't be the snout houses or.
Hold on, will you take a question?
Sure.
Yeah. Those neighborhoods, will they traditionally have like HOA?
Absolutely. Everything should have an HOA. Yeah.
Thank you.
Never do condos. You probably know what I'm talking about there. Uh no, they all do HOAs. And by the way, this movement has spread so much, there are literally thousands. You can go anywhere. Southern Village and Chapel Hill, unbelie- there's some of them are so successful, they're not affordable anymore. So, you know, that that's why the more of them, the merrier. And you try to try to put this in some areas that don't have T and D's, because, you know, you're twenty miles away from Greensboro. You're kind of away from it. So it's finally getting, you know, out out further in in away from the center city. And uh anyway, and you know, with the focal point, instead of putting houses here, he's energized the view to the green space. I mean, I could go on and on about his design, and you'll meet him when we come up with the neighbors, uh because the neighbors are going to be upset. I don't want, I don't want this connection. I don't want this connection. But you need to connect neighborhoods. There's nothing wrong with it. And 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 so that's so important, connectivity. And there are a lot of uh here, you don't get the sense of place, you want to get a five minute walk to a center. Love to have walkable schools. Part of the reason I did this, I grew up in a neighborhood where I could walk to all my schools in New Jersey. It was built around nineteen hundred, and it had a variety of houses. I grew up that way. So when I saw Andreas in a magazine, I said, oh, he's my guy. Uh and you have a neighborhood center, uh variety of dwelling types is the key. We can have affordable housing in this. I'm doing this in most of my neighborhoods, doing cottage homes around nine hundred to eleven hundred square feet without garages. So you could have a school teacher or fireman in the neighborhood. And in Vermillion, we have houses, unfortunately, now, that are getting close to a million dollars, but I still have apartments we rent for seven hundred and fifty. So, you know, little one bedroom. Uh connected streets, you can have accessory dwelling units. You can put the mother-in-law suite with the father-in-law, or be the old father-in-law, uh on a unit behind and on top of a garage. And of course, playgrounds, you know, every five minute walk, kids need to be able to be at one of these open spaces. And I'll keep moving here. We love to have shops and offices at the edge. In this particular case, you can't get everything, because most of your retail near uh is over, I'm not sure which road, it's about half a mile away. But it could grow to there. You know, these things can can add on. Love to have civic buildings, but what we're going to do is restore the farmhouse, and maybe that'll be use for for the neighborhood. And it's self-governing with an HOA. And here's just some shots. Uh these are some pictures of Vermillion, not in the right time of the year. But these are, you know, siding townhomes. You know, we threw a front porch out on a few of them. Uh this is another street scene. We put the street trees every forty feet. Uh Vermillion now is almost, most of the streets are completely shaded after twenty years. I come up with cute names, Alley Bastard. I got Alley Moni. I got, I got all the alleys. Ku Klufran and Alley. This is a square. I got the name after my dad. Uh that's, my office is right here. The restaurant's right over here. That's another little uh closed park up the road. And this is kind of a street scene. And we we have narrow streets. That's why you guys are going to hate us. If you have narrow streets and on-street parking, what happens? Can't drive fast. You're going to pull over and wait. Pedestrians are safe. Why are the streets faster they go? So these are all the the tools. This is actually South Side many years ago. I think it's matured much more. That's the central square there. And that's South Side again.
Looks like all your communities have sidewalks, is that?
Both sides. Yeah, absolutely. Everywhere. Yeah, absolutely, everywhere. And that's one of the older houses. That's a new house. That's an old house. We just, we just rehabbed the ones that were there. And I'm not even quite sure where she took this one. But, you know, this is again a row of townhomes. So, you know, that, that's a good look at it. It's going to be a fight probably with the neighbors. And it's probably going to be a fight probably with people like Fire and other because they're going to be concerned about the size of streets, about how tight we want everything to slow everybody down. But we've done it before in many other communities. And we want an opportunity to bring it to Reedsville. So if I have any questions, I'll answer them right now.
Just, just a quick question. It sounds like you've covered almost everything. What about, you know, we love our animals, so a dog park?
Oh, dog park, easily, because you put that in there. I mean, if, if people could all control their dogs, a dog park's out there. You know, the only reason I go to Bald Head is because they have no rules on dogs, if you can control them. But it would be easy to do a fenced-in dog park area. I love it. I used to be a dog trainer. I forgot at college, believe it or not. So dogs are easy, people are hard.
I think it's exciting. I've lived in these neighborhoods before. And it, it certainly makes a big difference, not only about the traffic, but you also become friends with your neighbors, you know? When you live in a big neighborhood and you hardly ever speak with anybody or whatever, so... But they're great. I think it's exciting.
And right with the work at home, it's even better because the folks that can work out of the home, they're not going to be on your, on your roads. They're going to want to be walking around when they take a break or, you know, having the kids out there. There's so many people at Vermillion now that, that aren't going back to work, I know, because of commute to Charlotte. I can walk to work. I, I, my office is in the neighborhood. And I live in an older house that my first wife, who passed away, grandparents built right on the railroad track. And I got less than a five-minute walk to work. I mean, how much easier is that on my life than spending half an hour to an hour commuting in and out of Charlotte?
In one neighborhood I lived in, the school was in the middle. And it was so great to see kids walk into school, you know, because they didn't, we didn't have to have school buses.
I'm, I'm, I'm not 90, but I could go home at lunch. And they had elderly retired people that would be at crosswalk. So I went home at lunch from elementary school and then back to school. And at the high school now in Ridgefield, New Jersey, if you have a, it's an open campus. If, if you have a study hall and you don't want to stay there, you can go home, come back. So, you know, we'll never get it perfect on every development. But you, you try to hit as many of the points of new urbanism. If you want to know more about it, seriously, Suburban Nation was written by Andreas Dewaney. And it's a fantastic book that explains everything. Suburban Nation. It's a great read. Has some nice pictures in it to show the difference between separating all the uses, funneling everybody out to collector roads, and sitting in traffic. So Suburban Nation, you look that up, you can, you'll find a copy and it's a very good reading. All right? Be good?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
So anyone else who'd like to speak for?
I have one, just a short thing, if that's okay. Just a side note, so we would be the first ones in Rocky Ham County to adopt a district like this if y'all approve it, so. I'm just a little biased. Thank you.
Since you left that out, I'll just... Would you be prepared?
Anyone else who'd like to speak for? Anyone who'd like to speak? So number one, the public hearing closes at 7:30. There's a interdiscussion. This would leave us a whole lot of flexibility to work with houses.
It would meet a lot of, it would meet a lot of needs that we have right here.
Exactly. My son, he lives in a neighborhood, Blackstone. And it is very nice. Very nice, like you said, the neighbor is getting older to the board. It's just a more sharing environment. It's nice.
And I like, go ahead. I'd like to think of something different with the walkability of this establishment. Of course, I would probably like restaurants and things where I could walk to even more, or the citizens could walk to. But with our ozone in the state that it is now, we've got to start thinking about our future. You know, of our children, our grandchildren, what are we leaving? And we can keep that admission and those cars off the street. What a, what a plus.
Yes. They're very possible. They should be impossible now and make them move without traffic.
All right, any other questions or comments? What's your favorite voting zoning ordinance text amendment? T-2023-07.
Washington.
Any discussion? Those entitled as well.
Thank you. And I meant to come up with Frank Lloyd Wright. I'm 70, so I'm losing some of my time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Bobby.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, consideration of text amendments. A legitimate request to amend Article 2, Section 1, definition, and Article 5, Section 2, table of permitted uses of the city zoning ordinance to define amusement indoors or indoor and amend the table of permitted use to include amusement indoor as a permitted use in central business district, CB, general business, GB, highway business, HB, and industrial 1. 1-1 zoning district, T-2023-8, enclosure 5. Jason, again.
Thank you again. The planning staff is petitioning to amend Article 2, Section 1, definitions in Article 5, Section 2, table of permitted uses of reasonable zoning ordinance. There's three phases to the text amendment proposal. The first phase will define amusements indoor as commercial uses varying in size, providing daily or regularly scheduled recreation or entertainment-oriented activities in an indoor setting. Typical use types include bowling alleys, escape rooms, trampoline parks, indoor mini-golf, axe-throwing, laser tag, and palm readers, among others. Excluded use types include shooting ranges, alcohol establishments, nightclubs, arenas, coliseums, and amphitheaters, among others. Phase two will amend Article 5, Section 2, table of permitted uses to allow amusements indoor as a permitted use in the central business district, the general business district, the highway business district, and the industrial 1 district. Currently, the current permitted use for amusements is defined as amusements, commercial establishments, including but not limited to bowling alleys and roller skating rinks, not including drive-in theaters, commercial stables, roller coasters, carousels, fairgrounds, automobile racetracks, circuses, or the like. It does not make a distinction between indoor and outdoor amusements. And they're not allowed in the central business district or the general business district. The proposed text amendment distinguishes amusements indoor as a new permitted use. The new definition for amusements indoor will identify the typical uses allowed as a part of the use. The proposed text amendment is consistent with the reasonable land development plan under both goal number one, a thriving downtown, and also goal number two, a strong local economy. Goal number one is accomplished by seeking to attract businesses to the downtown area while simultaneously encouraging development of a robust social entertainment center. Goal number two is met by working to bring in a wider variety of businesses to the city that will generate further interest for growth in Reesville as a whole. The planning staff recommend adoption of the proposed text amendment and the planning board unanimously recommended the text amendment be approved. Would I answer any questions?
Yes, Mr. Harin.
Yes, ma'am.
For the use, would that include, for the use, would that include pool tables?
So we have pool halls as an individual use. So that would trump over this still.
Okay, so it's a separate entity?
Yes. Because, because we define pool halls specifically. So those are when you have a square footage of 60% of pool tables. It's like I have a business, 60% of the square footage is used for pool tables. That's when it's a pool hall. So that's not allowed in the central business district still.
Got you. Yeah, thank you so much.
No problem.
Any other question? This two gives us some flexibility. New ventures. Other questions? Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Public hearing opens at 7:40. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for? Number one. Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Close the public hearing. Section 41. What's the favor of counsel in the zoning text amendment?
Second.
Question, second. Any discussion? Although in favor, wish I could... Next and last, public hearing. Consideration of a text amendment request to amend Article 2, Section 1, definitions in Article 5, Section 2, table of permitted uses of the city zoning ordinance to define amusement outdoor and theme park and amend the table of permitted use to include amusement outdoor and theme parks as a permitted use in our business and industrial I, industrial 1, I-1, zoning district T-2023-09, enclosure 6. Jason.
Thank you again. The planning staff is petitioning to amend Article 2, Section 1, definitions in Article 5, Section 2, table of permitted uses of the reasonable zoning ordinance. There are three phases to this text amendment proposal, very similar to the last one, except kind of the opposite. Phase one will define amusements outdoor and theme parks as commercial uses varying in size and type, providing daily or regularly scheduled recreation or entertainment-oriented outdoor activities. Typical use types include batting cages, miniature golf facilities, go-kart raceways, archery range. And excluded use types include athletic parks, athletic field, or athletic fields and parks, shooting ranges, playgrounds, botanical gardens, nature and game preserves, zoos, and stadiums, among others. Phase two will amend Article 5, Section 2, table of permitted uses to allow amusements outdoor and theme parks as a, as a permitted use in the highway business and industrial 1, I-1 districts. Currently, the permitted use, amusements is commercial... Currently, the permitted use for amusements is amusements, commercial establishments, including but not limited to bowling alleys, roller skating rinks, not including drive-in theaters, commercial stables, roller coasters, carousels, fairgrounds, automobile racetracks, circuses, or the like, and does not make a distinction between indoor and outdoor amusements. The proposed text amendment distinguishes amusements outdoor and theme parks as a new permitted use along with the new definition for amusements outdoor and theme parks. Will identify the typical uses allowed as part of the new permitted use. The proposed text amendment is consistent with the reasonable land development plan under goal number two, a strong local economy. Goal number two is met by working to bring more businesses into Reedsville that will generate further interest for growth in Reedsville as a whole while providing enhanced amusement and entertainment options throughout the city and the extraterritorial jurisdiction. The planning staff recommend adoption of the proposed text amendment and the planning board unanimously recommended the text amendment be approved.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Public hearing opens at 7:44. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for? Number one. Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Close the public hearing at 7:44 and a half. 7:45. Any discussion? What's your favorite on text amendment? Motion? Number seven. Any discussion? Although in favor, wish I... Next item on the agenda, consideration of water treatment plant, Hit Works replacements, project resolution to accept offer of funding of $1,116,000 from the NC Department of Environmental Quality. King Water State, revolving on SRF, bringing the total loan amount to, total project to $5,36,100. Capital project ordinance amendment and budget ordinance amendment, enclosure 7.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is not a, a new project. This is one we've talked about for several times. It's at the wastewater treatment plants, the Hit Works. You may all recall just a couple of months ago in June, you actually approved a contingent award to the low-bid contractor, Jay Corumy Construction, for the, for the project. And it was contingent upon us receiving the additional funds we needed from the state. And so the state did have additional funding at the same terms that the original funding was, which is 20 years at an interest rate of 0.18%. Not 1%, but 18th of a percent. And it was slated to be approved by the local government commission at their August 1st meeting. And they did approve that on their consent agenda. So the total amount borrowed is now $5,36,100, which is an additional $1,116,000 that we, we needed. So we're bringing it back to you because there is a resolution required to accept that full amount of the loan, $5,036,100. And in addition to the resolution, there's some other budget housekeeping we need you all to do. There's the wastewater treatment plant, Hit Works, capital project ordinance amendment, which recognizes that full $5 million. The only thing, other than the loan proceeds that's needed, is there, we do have to pay the closing costs of this loan. There's a, there's a, there is a fee to the loan and that's not a loan-eligible expense. So it comes 2% of the loan, which makes it $100,722. So there's also a budget transfer in the sewer fund reserves to cover that 2% fee that goes along with this loan. But that's where we are. And this will allow this project to move forward. Sir?
You tried to negotiate the closing fees, though.
No, they... No, that, that's really where they get the funding for the program because the interest rate's so low. You know, we, another project we have, the interest rate's zero. And this interest rate's very low, you know, as well. So that's, that's where they, that's where they cover the cost of running part of this program.
What type of interest rate?
It is, but, you know, $5 million for $100,000, 2% one time instead of 2% a year. It's still a pretty good deal for, for borrowing money.
Any questions, Chris? Chris, I only have three things we have to...
Yes, sir. There's the resolution and then the capital project ordinance and then the budget ordinance amendment.
All right, that's about one at a time. First, resolution by General Body. To accept the offer of funding.
Motion to accept the offer of funding?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, no, I was going.
Ballot in favor, raise your hand. Wastewater treatment hit works capital project ordinance amendment. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. And finally, the budget ordinance amendment number three.
Motion to.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Consideration of amendments to chapter ten, municipal utilities and service, services, section ten, act thirty-one, use of master meters, which encourages the use of the master meter and gives the director of Public Works the authority to approve such meters. Enclosure eight, Josh Beck, Public Works.
Good evening. It's been a minute since I've been up here. If you guys recall, in fact, several of these were talked at our retreat back in February, which I know has certainly been a minute as well. But at the time, I discussed a number of reasons for allowing master metering. In fact, currently, that section ten thirty-one says it should be discouraged, and it can only be approved by the city manager. The city manager is not involved in the T R C process when we go through that. And I don't, can't speak for other city managers, but ours are certainly very busy. And I don't, I think the best course of action is to allow the T R C committee to review projects, look on them at a case-by-case basis, and determine when a master meter might be of best use in those. For the reasons I can't really speak of, it was, it was wrote the other way, which is basically discouraging. So our superintendent of public services didn't push that. Engineering didn't push it at the time because they felt like it wasn't something that should be needed. But again, several reasons for allowing master meters. One, it can actually make the build actually cheaper on an apartment complex where you're not running. You know, if you've got a singular building and you've got thirty, forty units in that building, or to individually meter something like that, you've got to bring thirty or forty service lines down, whereas you could do trunk lines through there and distribute off in the facility. It actually costs the city more when we don't allow master metering because the city, the way the remaining ordinance is set up, we don't charge for small five-eight, three-quarters meters. We charge for large meters. And large meters, we also have the possibility of calibrating them every year instead of replacing them. We don't calibrate small meters. It's too costly for something like that. So allowing a large meter at a single complex, which might be five to seven hundred units versus five to seven hundred small meters, seems to be a logical choice. It's something that has been done for many years now in other larger municipalities. And so I just ask that you consider it in Reedsville as we move forward, as we see some developments moving on. A single-family residential home is always going to be that, you know, the traditional neighborhood that was brought for. Those are fairly straightforward. Those are going to be three-quarter meters at each and every house. That's, that's not changing. It's just the allowance of, say, an apartment complex, a mall, something that would have a, a single owner but many uses to allow us to do a master meter out of the road that my staff will service and maintain. And then everything behind that meter is also private and the responsibility of that property owner. I'll be happy to take any questions or concerns.
Well, I, I'd just like to make a statement that Mr. Beck said. To me, you hit the nail on the head when you said saving the city of Reedsville money. So thank you for that information.
Absolutely.
And I think that looking at the potential growth coming our way that we hope for and we've got a plan for, that's the wisest thing for us to do.
That's right.
New term is on the box, actually.
That's right.
Any other question?
I can make a motion. A motion that the city ordinance be amended to a lot of Public Works directed to approve masturbators where common ownership is present, such as park complexes, shopping centers, office parks, and other similar locations.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, the new term. Consideration of capital improvement plan and recommendation of engineer and awarding of contract to McGill Associates. Enclosure nine.
Thank you, Mayor.
Again, this is one we talked about. This has kind of been a gold for a while. Truthfully, in my interview process with municipal order than others, I asked if the city of Reedsville had a capital improvement plan. Capital improvement plan, it, it's just that it allows the city to take the plans that have been developed. We have a lot of data already that this will, will get handed over, our G I S, for example, our asset management plans. But they're all looked at separately, right? So Glenn, that was actually here before, his firm did two of those studies. They evaluated all of our water. They evaluated all of our sewer. And then we had a third engineer evaluate all of our streets. But nobody got in the same room and put those plans together. And that's kind of the easiest way to describe what a capital improvement plan, pull all those together, look at the funding opportunities that we have, and make sure we're using that money over here in appropriate location where the grant applications can fund that, but not, and then spend reasonable money over here where it wouldn't be, it wouldn't meet those thresholds of fifty-one percent. And so utilize our, our funds where it makes sense, not pave a street today, and then next year, we wind up doing water and sewer rehab and tear that road up. That's kind of the goal of this. Again, to, to look at those things, kind of come up with a ten-year, long-term plan. This is where we should head. This is our most critical need today, knowing that funding is limited. And then what is our second, third, and so on, over the years? It'll also work with Chris and, and staff to determine what those needs are, to look at the funding opportunities available, the costs associated with those, and work through that plan to determine, like I said, those priorities and pave a pathway forward so that, heaven forbid, something happened to me, I get hit by a bus tomorrow, somebody still knows what the plan should be for the next ten years moving forward through Reedsville. And again, help set those priorities. Priorities can change, that's for sure. It's not set in stone by any means. Sometimes it makes sense, depending on the scale of those projects, to maybe delay it a year and put two or three together because you get better mobilization costs with a larger project. I've certainly done that in the past with, with C I P plans. And I'm sure everyone's C I P plan was destroyed with COVID. I guarantee you that. So there's always flexibility. I don't want anyone to feel like they're set truly in stone by this plan, and we have to do X street because it was on this plan for year twenty-five. But the goal of this is to present this to you, to go through everything this year, and have the design firm present this to you at our next retreat. And so we sent an R F Q out outlining all the bene, all the things we wanted the engineering firm to look at, present that to us, we reviewed those, and then we asked for cost for that scope of work. And we got back the proposal of one hundred nineteen thousand one hundred dollars to do that. And so I asked that you, two things, recommend award of McGill and Associates, which is the engineering firm we're recommending, and then in the amount of the one hundred nineteen one hundred dollars. Any questions on the C I P McGill or the cost?
I like the fact that we have a, we'll have a road to trap.
That's correct. That's the main benefit of this.
We need to start with some adjustments on the way. Answered or deleted. At least we've got a game.
And again, we'll present this at the retreat. Certainly, at that point, any questions or comments for the engineer once we get through the plan, if there's something you don't like, or, you know, gives you the opportunity before it's officially in, in stone as well. So it'll be an opportunity for you then, after city staff have reviewed it and agree with that as well.
What's your favor on the capital improvement plan and the awarding of the contract to McGill Associates? Do we have to do the second?
You can do both one more time.
I'd like to make a motion that the contract be awarded to McGill Associates for the capital improvement project in the requested contract amount of one hundred nineteen thousand.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part. For the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand.
Are there any comments or special? Second one, those in favor, raise your hand. Consideration of adding subtle streets, downtown streetscape project and company streetscape capital project ordinance amendment. And then special whether to. Enclosure two.
It's me again, Mayor. Finally, my third one here, and again, one that we spoke of a little bit at the retreat. So, but some things have changed since, since that discussion. So about, I guess, August, September of last year, we were actually approached by one of the merchants owned Settle Street, about the owning situation, the, and when I mean owning, the hard ownings that you see there, not the fabric ones that probably come to mind. And, and basically, the request was that, originally, the request was that the city repair those. And we informed the, the merchant at that time that that's not the city's responsibility, that's not the city's structure. That is an encroachment into the city's right-of-way. And so what we did is we gathered, I went door-to-door, and I visited all the tenants that I could find and invited them to City Hall to talk about the situation and informed them truly that there was, there was a certain amount of liability on both them and the city because the structure was not necessarily sound. And I know I shared some pictures with you guys in the two-on-twos. Really not sound structurally, definitely in need of some maintenance. And so we started the conversations and, and agreed that the city would remove that at no cost for them, but we needed everyone in the room to agree. And of course, I've been working with our city attorney on an agreement to do just that. The conversations continued, and of course, at this point, I think the streetscape was probably halfway or so completed, and it seemed like they liked the progress and what they saw. And so the conversation sort of morphed into, well, can the streetscape continue down Settle Street? And so, of course, at the retreat, I presented the cost, but unfortunately, there wasn't budget for that at that time. So what's changed? Well, what's changed is, of course, the streetscape is now complete, and we have roughly a hundred thousand dollars remaining. We've since, since the initial budget, have been able to refine it and get actual cost estimates from all the contractors needed, and that also brought the overall project cost down. So now, the total cost is two hundred and twenty thousand to do the work, and it's a combination of a few things. So it takes the two hundred block of Settle Street and, and renovates it completely. It also adds pole lights, just like we have on scales, on the one hundred block and two hundred block. And then while we're in this area and doing this work, we felt like it was a great time to also do some boring to get direct fiber connectivity to Market Square. So the two hundred and twenty I present to you tonight actually accomplishes all three of those. And I know Judy's not here tonight, but having direct fiber connectivity and not wireless connectivity that's beamed from a pole, and then I know they actually beam some of it from the fire station up Scale Street to try to get connectivity to that area would be a huge benefit. And one, truthfully, that the, the merchants on that street are in favor of. You know, there was some comments about parking. I believe we've addressed those. We have a, you know, a very sketch at best right now. And so, but with your approval tonight, we will obviously get the surveying done and get true engineering drawings done like we did on Scale Street, move forward with that project. Same communication process we go through, be very transparent about this the entire way. And again, based on, I think, three, four, maybe five meetings at this point with all of them, and we will continue those, especially after today's meeting, keep them in the loop as to what's going on and when we proceed. So the, the request before you tonight is to proceed with the project. Well, again, utilize the hundred thousand that's really just sitting in the old streetscape fund. We have one light pole left to set that we were just short, and so that's all that's left on that project. And so Chris and I looked and talked a little bit, and in the remaining A R P funds, and Chris certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a hundred and thirty-two thousand six twenty-one left in those funds. And so that's a little more than I'm asking. But I think the, the thought process was to move all that into the old streetscape budget line, and then that would allow us to proceed forward with this project incomplete. I'll take any questions, but this design, I just want to be clear, is slightly different than what we've done here. I know there was a lot of concerns about the large bump outs and that we did on scales. This will actually more mimic the other side of scales on Settle Street adjacent to the market, where we have the bump outs, the small moon shape, if you will, bump outs, half-circles in the roadway. We're trying to mimic that design throughout this so it looks like a continuation of Market and, and Settle as it is today. So, but I think it would be a nice addition. Obviously, removing those ownings, kind of a nice, or to say the least. I think it would greatly improve that street and, and really finish out, really a transformation of downtown, if you will, so.
Did you remember the fact that we're not going to be able to see any accountability as we remove this?
Correct. So, yeah, so the other day, actually, I met with our city attorney and dropped some, some other stuff off, but we're going to work on a whole harmless agreement that will get each individual property owner to sign. Again, I want to be very transparent. If we accidentally take a bucket truck and it, you know, rams through a storefront window, we're going to fix that. But what we're not, what we're being very transparent and telling we're not responsible for is when we remove the owning and the screws and everything that fasten it to that wall, removing that does leave the possibility of water intrusion and other things because you have holes in the building from that. That is the responsibility of the property owner to resolve. Obviously, we have grant opportunities that are available. We're connecting them with Robyn. She's been in the meetings. So if they want to make improvements to the facade of their building once this is complete, obviously, we're encouraging that, and those opportunities are available. Yes, sir?
How many buildings live in that block?
I want to say eight or nine, Professor Mann, but please don't hold me to that.
On the left-hand side of the road?
So we're, and I should, I guess I should have mentioned this. So we're already in works with the, the Michael Dennis and the Antiques. So he's moving through with Jason on some renovations. We're working closely with them on the, that design and what we're planning to do. And then, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of the guy who's doing the dirty laundry, but we've already been in communications with him, is, communications with him. You may have noticed my crews were out, and we removed the old driveway apron, and that was at his request. He's also asked us to remove the other one on Settle Street. So we gained two parking spaces on scales. Based on what you see today and based on the end result, even with the small tree bump outs, we look to gain spaces on Settle as well. So I think it's a win-win for everybody. Yes, sir?
If, unless not the whole, sign the whole office, what happens?
We'll have to work with the city attorney and go from there.
Would you still visit by, would you still take the owner down?
It's still a certain amount of liability on the city because we're allowing that owning in our right-of-way. So if someone were to get hurt, if that was to fall and collapse, not only would they sue the property owners, but they would, they could easily sue us as responsible for not maintaining it, even though it's not ours. But I, truthfully, in the meetings, I haven't seen that there's resistance to that, especially when we pushed it back on the property owners that they were responsible for the maintenance. Everybody seems on board. Everybody seems on board in the meetings, and I know Mayor's attended at least one or two.
Well, again, directly, you're saying it only costs a thousand dollars. I'm looking at why it's removed, only?
Well, it's just our, it's just the disposal of the material, and our time is not factored into the cost of this, because of city staff, and actually, one of the property owners at the last meeting mentioned they would take the material and use it, I think he said to build on his barn or add to his barn or something to that effect, so. So, we're actually looking at maybe not even...
That's what we've done, we've allowed them to have the materials we took.
Yes. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. We've got two items that we'll have to... Streetscape Capital Project Ordinance Amendment and Grant Special Revenue Ordinance Amendment, American Rescue Plan. First, for the Streetscape Capital Project Ordinance Amendment, so add a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, we have a voice to this thing, in discussion. Those in favor raise your hand. Now, for the Grant Special Revenue Ordinance Amendment, American Rescue Plan.
Second?
Most than second, I said. The amendment, those in favor raise your hand. Consideration of updated plans for use of American Rescue Plan funding and accompanying Grant Special Revenue Ordinance Amendment, Declaration eleven. Chris Phillips, Assistant City Manager of Administration and Financial Director.
Yes, sir. So, the action you all just took for the addition to the streetscape used the last undesignated funds of our American Rescue Plan, so the one thirty-two, six twenty-one you allocated, completed that. So, you'll see the memo that is in your agenda lists the ten projects that we completed with our American Rescue Plan funds. Some of them are still in process, and it could be a possibility of some savings that we could expand again, like Mr. Beck just explained, and you all agreed to. But for now, we have allocated all of our dollars, which had to be done by the end of twenty-four, and they still have to be spent by the end of twenty-six, but we were well scheduled to do that. There's one little bit of housekeeping, one of the earliest projects that you all committed to was actually the All-Inclusive Park, and that was really early on in getting the American Rescue Plan funds and figuring out how all this was going to work. And so, even though the dollars were committed, we didn't do the budget actions that takes to move the money from the American Rescue Plan Special Revenue Grant Fund over to the general fund where it's actually going to be spent. So, the last piece of budgetary cleanup for the American Rescue Plan, I need you all to consider doing this last Grant Special Revenue Ordinance Amendment, and then the Budget Ordinance Number Four, which moves the four hundred thousand that was committed to the park.
Yes, sir. Any questions? All right, we need a motion for the Grant Special Revenue Ordinance Amendment for the American Rescue Plan.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Got a second and a third? In discussion. Those in favor raise your hand.
Thank you.
Right. We still need...
And we still need the Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Four.
So moved.
Second. Okay, most than second. In discussion, those in favor raise your hand. Next on the agenda, we have Boarding Commission ordinance.
I would like to take a moment to mention something. Because you all approved as part of the consent agenda, the changing of the membership requirements for the Human Relations Commission, that does allow us to have the three open adult positions and allows the student, the high school student, to move to a college student situation. I just want to add that.
Do we have anyone who'd like to make the public comment? Saying one, we'll move on to... City Manager Report.
Mayor and Council, in respect for everyone's time tonight, I'll be extremely brief. In my report, there's several updates. If you have any questions, please let me know. The three that I would just like to bring your attention to is the Reed School travel policy. The travel policy was last updated on January the first, two thousand and eleven. The new policy, the old policy and the new policy, it just looks at bringing the meal reimbursement cost to current levels of what we're seeing in our economy. The second item, I just want to give a special thank you to the Reed's for Lucky Sprout and a very successful season, and also a special thank you to the General Manager, Justin Dills, for all he did. And then, finally, in my report, I just want to update Council and reference where we are with our Economic Development Director's search. We have got the job description together and working with Mac Williams and his firm, and then we will, they are getting ready to advertise that post the job this month, and we'll move forward with that, probably looking at about a two-month process once it's been posted. Also, in this report, it looks at our Strategic Economic Development Plan. Mr. Williams and his firm is looking at that. They're hoping it will be completed by the end of September, and will come before Council in October. I know many members of our council and community will be involved in that process. And Mayor and Council, unless there's any questions, I conclude my report.
I'm sure you've noticed that Ben Proteam Brown is not here on tonight. A deaf and his family's sister passed away. We sit in our prayers and condolences. He's not here, but he's here in spirit. We support him one hundred percent. As mayor, I see that. Councilwoman Davis, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On July the seventh, I attended the downtown Pride event, a special city council meeting on August, July, and special city council meeting on July twenty-sixth. And I attended also a meeting that was called to inform seniors of issues that affect us today and in the future, and I was out of town for the rest of the night.
And so, I don't forget you. Ms. Diane, you moved in your report at this time?
I also moved in. It's nice just to stretch for a second. So, we have entered our very busy season. I will be very brief, we have our golf tournament next Wednesday. I'm very excited to announce, we are basically sold out. We have nineteen teams in the morning and eighteen in the afternoon, a hundred and forty-four golfers, I believe it is, that has never happened. We used to max out at about a hundred and twenty, so we're very, very pleased with that as it's our annual fundraiser for the chamber, to put funds back in the programs and membership. We will have the Beer Garden at the concert, looking forward to Eight Track Mines. We introduced wine slushies at this last event, and they were a large hit, I will just say. So, we are bringing those back. Excited to have Leadership Rockingham begin, and we have several producers from the City of Reedsville. Thank you for both supporting our program, but also to be hosting a day in April for our City of Reedsville Day. We are very, very, very blessed to have Reedsville Christian Church hosting us for the Reedsville Business Expo and Job Fair. That is going to be on Thursday, October the twenty-sixth, and we are looking forward to that. We do have upcoming ribbon cutting in Jersey Mines, and that is at nine forty-five a.m. on Wednesday, August twenty-third, so two weeks from tomorrow. We do have a few new members, and September Coffee will be held at the YMCA hosted by United Way of Rockingham County. And that is all, unless you have any questions.
Any questions, Diane?
Thank you, Diane.
Councilwoman Scott?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm just going to give you some highlights. On July the eighteenth, the Kiwanis Club sponsored a cookout at Camp Carefree for the kids, and these were kids whose parents were chartering the deal, so it gave them a little break to get out of the house. And we fed over forty kids that evening with a cookout of hot dogs and hamburgers, and it was great. Everybody really enjoyed it, the Kiwanis members and the kids, too. Also, National Night Out was a great hit this year. We went to three different communities, and we were welcomed by all of them, and it was just so much fun to be able to meet our citizens on their territory and in a friendly situation, so that was a lot of fun. And the third, the last thing I want to mention is Lucky City Brewery has been revamped, a new board has been appointed, and in the last three days, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we raised over twenty-five thousand dollars to keep the brewery. And there's going to be a lot of changes, all new beers, kitchen, we will be putting in kitchen for food. It's going to change the appearance on the inside, because it's a whole new story, so we look forward to that, and we appreciate all of the citizens of Reedsville and around Reedsville that have bought memberships and bought shares. So, that's me.
Councilwoman Ward?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Due to the time, I'll pick out several. PDB, what Councilwoman Scuttle said, National Night Out was absolutely awesome, and we would like to thank everyone who participated in that. On July the twentieth, we had the Battle for the Cup, and for those who, that they do not know what that is, that's when we pit our office staff against our Public Works, against our police department, and I get, against our fire department. And if you want to see something that is very amusing and fun and sweaty and everything, just put this whole group together, who actually love one another and love doing this, but give them a football or a hula hoop or an ice cream testing contest, and they're out for blood. So, it is a great privilege, it's my understanding, due to COVID, we have not had this in three years. And the fire department had kept the trophy for three years. With this Battle for the Cup, and I think that he indexed that day, it was probably a hundred and two, but Public Works came out on top, so they had that for, what, about six weeks now? They will keep that trophy. So, good luck to the police department, fire department, and City Hall, you got it, you ain't. That's all I got to tell you. But it was, it was a very, very fun day, and certainly do appreciate that. On August the third, I was privileged to attend the Rockham County Economics Development Annual Meeting and got very valuable information from that. There were about eight or nine other events, and due to time, we will just turn those into the clerk, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilperson Hurst?
On July thirteen, I attended a Zoom meeting of the District A Concerned Citizens Meeting in reference to ideas of improvement, on improving the quality of life of citizens in that district. It was a very good meeting. On July the thirteenth, I attended the Chamber Ice Cream Social, and everything was just great that I, everything was great, hot dogs, chicken sandwiches, cold ice, and everything was just well put together, it was a good social event. Enjoyed it all. July the thirteenth, I attended the Rockham County NAACP Monthly Meeting, almost at first, and I also attended National Night Out, Whitworth Street, Community, and Western, and First Presbyterian Church, and all of them had just, everything was so laid out so nicely, and everybody at one time. Also, attended the Mac McLaurin Watch Meeting, that was at the Police Department. And then, on August the third, I attended the State Council meeting, and also, on August the third, I attended the Democracy of North Carolina Committee meeting, that was held in R six city. And that's my...
Councilperson Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for the City Manager. Under the City, City Regulatization Compensation Study, it seems like it's a departure under Group One, we're not, we're doing the Blue Park, but not the Chief, is that a departure from what we've done in the past?
No, sir, that's not a departure at all. Your administration and management team have always been put into the third category, but that's not a change at all.
So, when will that, when will that payback schedule be done?
That just happened. That was this past year with the implementation of July first.
Then, you do all the five C, blue C?
That's all the management team. Yes, sir.
Thank you, payback schedule.
Yes, sir.
Okay, my report's delivered, I chose just a few to highlight. Ice Cream Social, which is a dynamite, the Chamber, the employees' cup competition, I really enjoyed that. Had my granddaughter there, she had an opportunity to kind of help us in judging, I guess. She had, she had a heart. Also, attended the basketball game that was held at the Salvation Army, Brett Bajin, one of our former basketball players, football stars, got together a group, and they brought in all of the alumni that played basketball. For example, they had the highest-scoring male and female, and things of that nature, and they gave them a lot of flaps and certificates. Also, attended the Greek Beer to Watch meetings, and had an opportunity to make the Mac McLaurin meeting also, so I got all the people that were hitting that night. And the Greek versus Luke Powell program is something that I had an opportunity to attend also, and that was very educational for me. As a child, I lived on the same street that one of the thirteen lived on, and didn't know anything at all about it, and it was just that quiet at that time. But we were all educated on that day, and we all know the importance of that particular Supreme Court review. Well, that's all after that there, and we move into closed session. North Carolina Statute one four-three dash three-one-eight, twenty-eleven, eight, three, to consult with the city attorney to preserve the attorney-inclined privilege. As we go into closed session, we will not be coming back out to open session also.
The ballots.
Oh.
Take the motion.
The appointments.
You want to do that?
That's due now.
Okay. All right, I just want to announce that for the Reedsville Appearance Commission, Matthew Williams of three twelve Gilmer Street was selected unanimously.
Reedsville Appearance Commission, Matthew Williams of 312 Gilmer Street was selected unanimously, and then for the Human Relations Commission, three have applied, Dante Carter of 1051 Franklin Street, Apartment A, Ashton McLauren of 3230 Wentworth Street, and Matthew Williams of 312 Gilmer Street had all applied. And so now, the Human Relations Commission, the adult position is full, there's only the one student position that is still available there.
All right, thank you. All right, now I'll take a motion to go into closed session.
I need a motion.
Any discussion? Those in favor? Just right here. We will not be coming back out to open session yet. Thank you all.